Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Council for February 4th, 2020 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the call to roll call.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Un?
Here.
Bazard?
Present.
West?
Present.
Olson?
Present.
Burks?
Present.
Okay, it's the next item is the comments from the citizens present. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. Identify yourself and you have three minutes. Anybody who wants to speak, Mike?
I'll be very brief. Mark had just asked me, and I thought it'd be good for the whole council to know. Marjorie Schuet did not take papers out to run for municipal judge again. But there was somebody else who had taken papers out. I don't recall his name. Do you?
Ben something.
Ben something. And-
Judge Ben.
He was not listed in the State Journal. So if you're looking at candidates for office in the State Journal, they missed it. But it was listed in the Middleton Times Tribune.
It was on my list.
So, I had specifically asked Lori that because I didn't see it in the State Journal, and I was concerned, but I did see it in the Middleton Times.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting and move to the rule of the consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda after we remove number two from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Rule of the consent agenda after removing number two. And all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So now, item number two.
Thank you. I would make a motion for item number two, which is the meeting minutes of the Committee of the Whole and Plan Commission Retreat Minutes. On, I guess it would be page, oh, it's the first page of the meeting minutes, or no, page eight in our agenda packet, under Tax Increment Financing. It's probably like the fourth or fifth sentence in. It says, "Mr. Burns indicated that the value can grow higher than 12%, but that municipalities are limited to the 12% when creating new TIDS." And I thought, and discussed briefly with Bill, that maybe a better way to phrase that that more accurately says what he said at the meeting was, "Mr. Burns indicated that the value can grow higher than the 12%, but that no new TIDS can be created while the equalized value is higher than the 12% limit." And it's just a minor tweak that more accurately captures what Bill discussed with us at the Committee of the Whole.
That's seconded up.
Anything else, or that's it?
That's it.
Okay. So you, there's a second, so all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Okay, we are on to agreements, item number one. Stormwater Management System Maintenance Agreement with Madison Gas and Electric Company for Air Force Solar Project.
Who's the second?
I don't think it went to any committees. So need a motion to approve? Oh, you didn't make a motion, who is the second? Okay. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Okay, then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. We are on to item number two. Hangar Land Lease Assignment for Lot 2 R3320 Alfa Lane from Mark Washore to N4609 LLC.
Motion to approve the hangar lease, hangar land lease assignment.
Second.
Any question or comment? So the mark is essentially selling his lot to someone else.
Just, just a suggestion that we not sign the consent until the S and E's have also signed. Because, you know, if they don't agree to it, it's, it's not a problem that it's approved, but I would suggest withholding our, or your signature if it's going to be you signing it, until we have the signature.
Okay, so you want to make conditional with letting proving it?
No, agreement's fine.
Okay, okay, all right.
I just want to see all the signatures.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just recommend that you, Mr. Mayor, do not sign this until the other parties sign first.
Okay, well Lori knows that not to bring it unless it's all done. Okay, with that stipulation, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number three. Memorandum of Agreement with the County of Dane for Production of Digital Terrain and Orthophotography Data of Fly Dane.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to Ward of Bid, Court, and Professional Services. Item number one. Ward of Bid to Northwestern Stone LLC for Wood Road Construction.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Item number two. Ward of Bid to Jenny King for Janitorial Services for the Park Shelters.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the bid to Jenny King for Janitorial Services for the Park Shelter, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Item number three. Ward of Bid to Jenny King for Janitorial Services for Walter Baumann Aquatics Center.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number four. Ward of Bid to Coverall for Janitorial Services for Hubbard Arts Center.
Approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Miscellaneous Flood Plains Study Final Report. So we have somebody to make a presentation? So Steve Gaffield is here.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Hard to believe in a way, it's been more than a year since I've been in the country. I imagine the memory of it's still very vivid to everyone in the community. Such an unprecedented event. And it was one of the drivers for this study to take a look at making sure Middleton has up-to-date, accurate information on flood. I'm Steve Gaffield, I'm a water resources engineer. Amazalal resources, or EOR, based on hydro. And although I've never had to deal with, I think, an area that's flooded this badly, I've had enough water damage in my house to sort of have a tolerance into the headache and heartache that people face here. So, trying to see if we can provide some useful info for folks.
Let me swap this up quick. Thank you. All right. So, I'd like to take 10 minutes tonight and just run through why update floodplain maps? You know, what are floodplain maps? I think we able to show that the, the old floodplain maps that are in the books now just no longer reflect the accurate picture of flood risk in Middleton and for Pheasant Branch Creek. Talk a little bit about how we did this study for the city, what information's available on these new maps, how they compare with the old ones, and then how the city and how residents and businesses could use this information to help manage flood risk. And we can't do anything about whether it's going to rain 10 inches or 14 inches, but we can plan ahead. And Pheasant Branch Creek in dry weather is pretty small, innocent-looking stream, but as you know, it can have some very big floods. Just some comparison images here. This is Parmenter Street, traffic circle, and this, the creek crossing, a dry weather image off of Google Earth, and then photo after the peak of the flood of August 2018 taken by the, this is city video from a drone. And again, this is after the peak of the flood, but you can see it's, Little Creek has spilled way beyond its banks into the floodplain. Again, that's Looking West, Parmenter. Here's Looking West again, Confluence Pond, Demming Way area, just looking over the, yeah, just looking over Demming Way. You know, Little Confluence Pond became a lake. If you look out to the left or the south, it's a lot of the businesses down by Costco that were so badly damaged. So, this was one of the events that caused folks at the city to look at the floodplain maps, say, well, do these accurately represent the risks that we seem to be experiencing? And one comparison is the image on the right, which are reported damages in that area from the August 2018 flood. And there are many areas of reported damage. You can see the red and yellow colors that don't show up in the floodplain, which is the blue imagery on the picture on the left. And on the left is a section of the so-called flood insurance rate map, and this is a publication by FEMA. It's used for the National Flood Insurance Program to set flood insurance rates, and that's, that's what's on the books. It's also used locally as part of a state requirement to administer floodplain zoning. Imagine you folks are very familiar with that. But a couple of uses for these maps are the National Flood Insurance Program, and then City of Middleton zoning to meet State of Wisconsin regulations for development and other restrictions of land use in the floodplain. And there was enough suspicion that these maps don't represent flood risk accurately enough to do this study. So what's changed? The, the old floodplain study was done 15 to 20 years ago. Maps were updated about 10 years ago, a little, little longer. The study was done by a very good engineer. I've worked with Steve Grant, he's very capable. But some things have changed. The watershed has continued to develop. That's changed the physical characteristics of the watershed. More heavy rains in the last decade, and with the expectation that that's probably going to continue in the future. Again, no one's got a crystal ball, but that's, the projections are that heavy rains are likely to, to continue to be more frequent. And finally, we have better information about the watershed available. Orthophotography, as you were just discussing earlier, computer models that give us better tools to work with to predict flooding. And so what this study did was look at the Pheasant Branch Creek watershed, which is the area outlined in blue. Includes the North Fork, all the way up north of County Highway K, down into the City of Middleton. Pheasant Branch Creek flows east into Lake Mendota, and then the South Fork originates in the City of Madison, flows north into City of Middleton, and then Confluence Pond and joins the main fork of Pheasant Branch. Flood studies are done typically with computer models, simulations of the lay of the land, the characteristics, pavement, soil type, simulates rainfall, uses the physics of what's been known for years and years and years about what happens when rain hits the ground and runs off, how much water collects in the stream, backs up behind bridges, and that sort of thing, and ultimately predicts how high floodwaters reach for different rainfall depths in, in different areas. And those models are cross-checked against observations of floods like the one that happened last August. So, we constructed an updated computer model for Pheasant Branch Creek, compared it with observations from floods from three different years, 2016, 2018, the big one, and 2019, focusing especially on trying to get predictions right for the big floods, because that's the purpose of this model. And this image you're looking at is a comparison on the left of our computer simulation of what areas were flooded, shown in blue, in August 2018 versus the damage reports. And the, the regions on the two images are roughly the same. The yellow lines show tie-ins from reported damage to areas where we were predicting flooding. The dark blue feature in the middle, that sort of trends left or right, is the Confluence Pond. Deeper water there is darker blue. The other blue blob, dark blue blob down to the south is Esser Pond. In between the pale blue colors are areas of shallow flooding, where the water splashed out over the banks, you know, flooded Costco, flooded all those areas so badly. And did several different comparisons, but this image just illustrates, this actually matches pretty well with the damage reports. It's one of the, one of the things we used to cross-check. Okay, so let's get on to the maps. Floodplain maps typically illustrate an area that gets flooded in what's known as the 100-year flood. Really, a more accurate way to say it might be a 1% annual chance flood. It doesn't mean flood only happens 100 years. You could have 100-year flood this year and 100-year flood next year, same way you could flip a coin and get heads six times in a row, if you're lucky or unlucky. So it's a standard, not a requirement, but standard to map the 100-year flood, floodplain. And also, it's common now to include the 500-year floodplain, which again, the probability of that happening in any given year is only 0.2%, but it does happen. Consistent with FEMA mapping and zoning, the 100-year floodplain is typically mapped in three different areas, or three different zones or zoning districts if it's incorporated into floodplain zoning ordinance. The floodway, which is the diagonal hatch that you'll see on maps in a second, is the area of active flood flow. Flood fringe are areas that are backwater flooding, that it's not the area that's actively conveying water downstream, but it might be low areas that are off to the side that get inundated when you have a flood. And then there's storage districts, which we'll talk about a little bit more, areas like South Pond and Confluence Pond that are important for storing water temporarily and reducing the downstream impact of flooding. And we'll get to maps, but just to illustrate the point, all of those areas are shown on this map, and this is what the floodplain maps that you'll see look like. And I should point out, poster size maps are here. These three posters are the entire Pheasant Branch Creek watershed, which you can inspect up close. The orangish areas here around the margins are the bigger 500-year flood. It's more, bigger rainfall, more rare event, higher floodwaters that extend farther out from the stream. The candy cane stripe from the airport down toward Confluence Pond is the floodway along the mainstream channel. There's some areas you can see off to the side that are just the plain blue, that are low areas, side valleys that get flooded, known as the flood fringe. And then the pond itself is that crosshatch area of floodplain storage. And the storage is important as floods rush through areas like Confluence Pond. The pond is designed to store those floods, or some of the floodwaters, and it reduces the discharge or the, the rate that waters release downstream, so provides some protection downstream. It reduces flooding. Zoning, as you probably know, requires protection of the flood storage with the flood storage zoning designation, so that, that flood, flood storage isn't taken up as development occurs and fills in the bathtub, so to speak.
So Steve, would you say that your 500-year flood is mostly the fringe? I mean, the way you have mapped it, it looks like as if it's, if you were to go through those four, three categories, so it will be the top one, 100-year flood fringe then? It will be a 500-year flood fringe?
Good question. The 500-year flood is typically not broken out into floodway, flood fringe. The 100-year flood is, and it really mirrors zoning ordinances. So the city's floodplain zoning ordinance defines a floodway district, which has more restrictions than the flood fringe district. And then flood storage district, which I don't believe Middleton has currently, but could have, has restrictions on placing soil and filling up that storage. The 500-year floodplain, if I'm correct, doesn't actually appear in the city's zoning ordinance, which is typical.
Okay.
The zoning's based on the 100-year flood, so it's differentiated more. The 500-year floodplain is shown on FEMA flood insurance rate maps typically. I'm trying to remember if it's information only, or if the flood insurance rates are a little bit higher in the 500-year floodplain than, than beyond the 500-year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, again, we updated the floodplain map, North Fork, South Fork, the main stem down to Pheasant Branch. You can't see a lot of detail on this overview, but it shows the area that are included in the mapping. And I'll zoom in on a few areas and do a comparison of the new maps that we created versus the existing flood insurance rate maps to illustrate some of the differences. And these are the areas where the differences are most substantial. So the images here on the right, just what I showed you, that's the, the new draft maps that we produced with the 100- and 500-year floodplain. On the left, with the blue and the red pattern, is the current floodplain map. It's, and this is what's on the books at FEMA, it's what the city zoning ordinance reflects. And this is a view from DNR's web mapping site. This is the airport, so you can see Airport Road going left or right in the center of this image. And the airport is just north of that, obviously. Lot of similarities, so one difference, actually, our 100-year floodplain on the north side of the airport is smaller. That's one area. There aren't too many areas where we've delineated a smaller 100-year floodplain than the previous study did, but that is one area. On the other hand, we're showing additional flooding on the east side of the airport that was not included in the original flood insurance study. That's partly from the local drainage from the northeast side of the airport. There's a tributary valley that comes in, flows south across Airport Road. And in really large floods, like the 500-year flood and the August 2018 flood, which, by the way, I should mention, that was more like a 1,000-year flood. So if you're noticing, there's areas in the orange map of the 500-year floodplain that we're showing that, if you think that doesn't reflect how widespread the flooding was in August, you're right. That was an even bigger flood, that was more like a 1,000-year flood. In August, the floodwaters actually made an N-run around the north side of the airport, crane crashing over Airport Road, south down Nursery Drive, down into Confluence Pond. And that's something we'd expect to happen in the 500-year flood is also. So, east side of the airport and south along Nursery Drive, which was fairly hard-hit last August, are areas with more changes. And down along Confluence Pond itself, you can see floodplain extent that we've delineated for the new study is a little bit bigger. If you go down to the South Fork, this is the area of the biggest difference for a couple of reasons. South of Highway 14 is beyond where, beyond the extent of the effective flood insurance study. So that area just wasn't included. So Esser Pond, South Pond, the flooding that occurs there just wasn't part of that study. So we've included it here and gone upstream to the City of Madison boundary. And then along the creek itself, between Highway 14 and the Confluence Pond, again, this is the area that got damaged so badly, you know, Costco, of course, is in that area. The existing flood insurance rate map shows the floodplain confined just to that narrow channel. Our projections are, spreads out, gets out of the banks, floods down this street, floods down that street, makes a loop on Demming Way, significant amount of pooling over by the, the cloverleaf at the belt line. And again, this seems to reflect what we actually saw happen in August 2000, 2018. Reasons for this. One, our study used higher rainfall depths than the, the previous study. Should back up and say we had Professor Daniel Wright at the Civil Engineering Department at UW-Madison do an updated evaluation of rainfall, looking at about the last 20 years of rainfall. And consistent with our observations, it's been heavier rain. He updated the definition of 100-year rainfall, and it increased by about 15%. So we're using more rainfall data, the watershed in that area has changed, number of factors, but, you know, this is one of the areas that I think city staff looked at and said, "That just doesn't really seem to reflect what's happening on the ground." And we agree. So, in summary, we believe these new maps provide the city with more accurate and up-to-date information about flood risk along Pheasant Branch Creek. There's been no update yet of the flood insurance rate maps, so those are all still existing with the old maps. It would be a decision up to the city about what you want to do with these updated maps. You could update the flood insurance rate map, or you could not do that and use these maps for local zoning and other decision-making, but you, you have some options there. But nonetheless, whatever you do, we hope you'll find this useful information to better understand flood risk for planning decisions as a city, and have information to provide property owners in businesses about extent of flooding, frequency that they might expect flooding on their property, elevations of these floods at their property, which can help plan floodproofing measures, what elevations would be prudent to plan for, or even how to use different parts of a site that are at different elevations, just to try to minimize risk. So with that, finished? Be happy to answer questions if you have them now or later.
Questions for Steve? I have one question that, so we have FEMA maps now, so in terms of insurance, how would it go? Since we have more recent information?
Right.
So, should they be updated, or how, how would it be affecting the businesses?
So far, you know, this hasn't been submitted to FEMA, so there's no change to the flood insurance rate maps yet. There could be. So you could decide, we've got updated information, we should update the flood insurance rate maps. That's one way to provide this information and one way to manage risk. Anytime that's done, some people are, some people are unhappy, no matter how you do it. A lot of people don't really want to have a mandatory flood insurance purchase requirement. And on the other hand, it's useful to know if you're in 100-year floodplain or 500-year floodplain. But, you know, that'll be a policy decision. We've played, seen that play out in many communities, a remap, and people will be upset if they're in a floodplain, or they might be. Maybe you don't hear from the people that aren't upset about it, or maybe appreciate the information. But that's an option, but not a requirement for the city. In fact, there's no requirement, you don't have to do anything with this. Another option that the Department of Natural Resources has pointed out the city could do would be to not update the flood insurance rate map, but to have this as a separate zoning overlay. So you would use it for development restrictions, providing information. There's a downside that's been pointed out to me, that, you know, you've got inconsistent information sources there, so it could be confusing, but you, you have at least those two options.
Thank you. Questions for Susan?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there sufficient data in here that if, for example, the county buys areas in the northwest part of the county that could be used for infiltration and flood storage, that that would hopefully have an impact? Could we tell if that would have an impact on the floodplain here in Middleton?
Yes. So in addition to the maps, I should have said, one of the things that you paid us to give you is the computer model that predicts how the watershed works. And so although looking at the effect of areas like that wasn't part of the study, this model could be used, you know, by us, by other engineers, other researchers, to answer questions like that. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a new tool available to you. And you can look at areas to store and slow down floodwater upstream. You could also look at if there's some bottlenecks in the drainage system, maybe a bridge that could be expanded a little bit and relieve some backflooding behind it.
Any other questions for Steve? So if you were to, yes, Mike?
I just had a question to see if Steve knew much about flood insurance and eligibility for flood insurance. If- If a business is in that blue area that has been marked, they hadn't been previously, does that give them a better chance at insurance?
So flood insurance is available to anyone. And I've heard many people say, and I don't know the flood insurance program inside out, but it is a fairly common misconception that, you know, you can't get flood insurance, say, through FEMA if you're not in the mapped floodplain. You can, and actually, the premiums are lower if you're not in the floodplain because the risk is lower. What is true is there's the so-called mandatory purchase requirement for properties that are in the floodplain. And it doesn't mean the police are going to show up and demand you have flood insurance, but there's some strings attached that, for practical purposes, most people do have to purchase the flood insurance. For instance, if you want any kind of federal assistance, including a loan from a federally insured lender, like any bank, you need to have the flood insurance. So that's the so-called mandatory purchase. And that's getting close to what I can tell you about the flood insurance program.
One of our largest property owners didn't realize he had flood insurance, but he did, and he was outside of the floodway.
Mm-hmm. Right, and it's a good point. Being outside of a line on a map doesn't mean there's no risk. The flood could be bigger. You know, these maps are useful, they're wrong. You know, they're not perfect. And I think they're the best information out there, but, you know, got to have some humility and realize this is the best assessment of risk that I think we've got, but it's not perfect. You can have bigger rains and other reasons you might flood.
And then one other question I had was, were you just looking at the creek corridor in North-South Fork and not the rest of the city?
Yes, that's right. This is Pheasant Branch Creek, flooding directly caused by Pheasant Branch Creek.
Yeah, because folks from Luke's neighborhood were here earlier and said, well, we had flooding too, and I didn't think that was part of the scope of your study.
If it was outside of the Pheasant Branch Creek watershed, that's correct. I know there's been a lot of interest, say, in Graber Pond. And that was outside of the scope of this study.
Thank you.
So Steve, since now you have the model, so if you want to make a cross-section at any particular place, using that model, you could do it? For example, if you want to know what is the depth, I mean, in this case, you know, you can look at the color and you could tell, but, so when you want to, for example, put the bridges and creek corridor or any of the other things, it's the depth of the water. And the second part will be that how long that water will be staying there at a particular height or depth. So is that quite simple by using your model, or staff could do it, or only you could do it, or how would that be handled?
The first is very simple, because the model has produced that, and now you've got graphs and maps that will tell you that information. So one of the things in this thick report, or a series of, call them flood profiles, but distance versus elevation plots from upstream to downstream, and it shows how the elevation of the 100-year flood surface, the 500, and several other floods drops downstream. And you can see what happens as it crosses a bridge, can see how much it drops, you know, some of them, you might have a four-foot drop from upstream to downstream on a bridge in the 100-year event. And that's all in these graphs. So that's something that, you know, anybody could look at in the report and pick out. There'll be GIS mapping data that we provide that staff or anyone else could use to construct a profile, if you wanted to have a graphic cross-section across the valley and show the depth in different places. And then finally, the model calculates the flood elevation at several, several, I think, hundreds of cross-sections spaced up and down the stream. We've calculated elevations at all of those. So you could look at the nearest cross-sections, look at the flood elevation, and get an estimate for any location along the creek.
Also, in your book, you do have the cross-sections then?
There, there. We have the profiles. We don't have the graphical cross-sections in every location, but we do have the elevation shown for all of those locations. Your last question was about the timing. That, you would need to run the computer model, which you can do, it runs with non-proprietory open-source software. So you could run the model, but we haven't summarized how long the water stays up at these different heights. I think you probably all have experienced, the water goes up and down pretty quickly, and it really did in August 2018. So, you know, it's hours as opposed to days, unlike, say, the Rock River where its water stays high for weeks and months. This is very short. But if someone really wanted to know precisely for a location, you know, the model does project that, or predict that, but you would need to run the model and produce a graph of those results, but you could get it.
So the other one was, you talked about the choke points, so that, you know, that the smooth flow of water, which by itself could reduce the flooding to a substantial amount.
Mm-hmm.
So is that all information there, if somebody want to find out where the choke points are?
Easiest way to identify that is, again, looking at these graphical profiles, and I'm sorry, we don't have it on a slide, but you can picture the sloping surface of the water on this graph as you're going downstream and say, you know, here's a bridge, you can see, as you go downstream, there's a big drop. And if there's a big drop, it suggests there's a big constriction. And if the smooth profile is just smoothly dropping across the road crossing, you'd say, well, that bridge is adequately sized, it's not a constriction, it's not backing water up. So kind of at a glance, you can just say, oh, jeez, you know, we've got this many feet of drop, you know, here's the top three bridges to go look at, for instance, and dig into it a little more detail.
Any more questions for Luke? You got a question?
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. Great job, Steve.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yep.
Well, we move on to the item number two, that the exception to ordinance 8.02 for site driveways at the proposed high school expansion. Public Works. It is essentially giving the permission to have driveway at Bristol and Middleton Street.
Move approval?
I'll second that.
Any, well, Robert, you have some questions?
I just, I was out sick at the last Public Works meeting. I guess the only question I have here is, what are we granting an exception to? I guess, what was, what was it originally that we are now saying can make a change?
So we have an ordinance that says only the council is authorized to allow the construction of a driveway within the limits of an intersection. And the high school site plan for the proposed expansion, especially parking areas south of the high school, are contemplating driveways on Bristol Street, one of which is at the intersection of North Avenue. And then for the drop-off of buses going westerly, out only, there'll be a driveway that lines up right at the intersection of where Middleton Street curves and becomes North Avenue. And that's not allowed unless the council says it is, but the traffic impact analysis looked at those movements and determined that that would be acceptable at these intersections. And so they didn't have any reason to recommend against it, so I'm recommending for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, the motion passes. So item number three is street improvement assessment policy. Let's say.
Move approval is recommended by finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion for street improvement assessment policy, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, but the motion passes. Item number four, endorsement of multicommittees, planning, public works, water sources management, conservancy lands, stormwater utility board, and pedestrian bike and transit on February 26 to review the Pheasant Branch Creek corridor study and recommendations.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? This is just to provide so that all those people who are involved can discuss at one time. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
I just had a comment, right? So it seems to me that when we first discussed repairing it, there was a concept that was floated that the thing to do was to restore the stream bank before we did anything else. And I want to just make sure that everybody's still on board with that, because I understand some of these constituencies here, but I think there's some dominoes that need to fall before we get further down this road, and that is, we need to fix the stream bank itself before we decide what we're going to do with trails and bike paths and other things like that. And so I just want to make sure everybody's still on that same page, because having all these committees together, it just, it seems like it's going to be a cluster, I think.
Well, there would be, if you look at the, you know, the timeline, so it is exactly what you're saying. So first, we got all those DNR grants, which has to be used during this year in any case.
But that's not all of it, right? That's a very small portion of the stream bank.
I think that covers all of them.
Comment, please.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, Mark, I think part of it is going to be a huge focus on stream bank, but it's, and part of the focus on stream bank is where the bridges will be located, how many bridges will be actually put back, or, they've all been put back, but they're going to be relocated. It might not have the same number, will probably have fewer bridges, and it's going to be in relation to rechanelling the stream bank, or rechanelling the stream. So there'll be a lot of changes. So I like to think of this as more an informational meeting for these different committees, because each one is coming at it with their own little narrow view, and they need the big broader picture. So like for BikePed, they need to be aware of the importance of rechanelling the stream when we're placing and determining where we'll put bridges and how they do the trail.
But that's my point, is that there's.
Well, we need to do the education first, otherwise we're going to be going.
But even before that, there has to be a priority of the stream bank first, and then the trails and any other, you know, bike paths or whatever we're going to do, has to come second to the rechanalization, right? There's, if you look through the Cardinal Report, it suggests that we make a decision on bridges before we make a decision on the stream bank. And I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page here.
That's not the page that Conservancy Lands was on when we met and agreed that we should have these other committees. There, it was very clearly, it's going to be the creek channel first, and then these other things fall into place. And some of it is getting information out there so that we can get citizens on board who are concerned about what kind of vegetation's going to go back in. Well, the vegetation is going to affect the stream bank and its stability, and there is a huge amount of education that has to be done for this. So getting all of this information out and how the different pieces go together, this isn't going to be the only meeting deciding what happens. This is more of an informational meeting.
I, and I do agree, Emily and I do want to say, I do agree with Mark is saying, you know, first things first, so go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, I'm not on any of these committees, but I was wondering if you could raise your hand if you're on one of these committees?
I'm on all but one.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's not like everyone but me, and at that point, we might as well just talk about it.
Come join us.
I would love to.
Please come, yes.
I'll come with cause.
Yeah, so maybe, could we, maybe, could Mike, that everyone, all the city council is invited?
Always invited to every meeting.
Always invited. I just want to make sure it's not just everyone's going anyways, and we might as well just have.
Well, but it would be important because.
I don't think we're anticipating any action by any of the committees. Like Susan said, it would be an informational meeting, and then each committee would take it back to their respective committees. And so in effect, what we're asking is the council's endorsement of the concept of this informational meeting, and then it goes to each committee for their own jurisdiction and suggestions, recommendations. So yes, it's a public meeting, council members are welcome to attend, and there won't be any decisions made at the meeting other than perhaps a process.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark, you have a good point there, first things first. So restore the slopes and the corridor, and then the other things. Okay, so the, any other questions or comments? So the motion is to endorsement of the multicommittee meeting on February 26. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes. Recommendations and proposals, request for TIF incremental district number five assistance for Grabberview Senior Living.
Move approval.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to resolutions. Resolution number one, resolution 2020-03, authorizing the issuance of TIF bond for electronic theater control holdings. It's in the amount of $3.6 million.
Just to clarify, the amount of the TIF bond would be $3,209,303. The $3.6 million was the maximum amount in the TIF agreement, but they've submitted their actual costs, and the actual cost was 3.2.
Yes, 3.2 million, so. Okay, so this was something which Bill added later on, so it wasn't in the original agenda. So Bill, do you want to explain it?
Yeah, these were all items that were reviewed by the Finance Committee two weeks ago. This just needs formal approval by the council. Each of these TIF bonds are items where we have a TIF agreement in place, the project has been constructed, they've submitted their actual TIF eligible costs, and then this is the final step where we approve the TIF bond based on the actual costs, and then start making TIF payments under those bonds.
Okay. So now, resolution number 2020-03, need a motion to prove.
Removed.
Okay. Any questions or comments? They already built that building, and they already paid for it, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes. Item number two, resolution 2020-04, authorizing the issuance of a TIF bond for damming prairie properties, Saco Foods.
Approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes. Item number three, resolution 2020-05, authorizing the issuance of TIF bond for LiveSite LLC, High Site Project.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number four, 2020-09, celebrating Black History Month, February in Middleton. It's proposed by council member Emily Coon, Eldred Coon.
Can I read it?
Sure.
Thanks. Resolution 2020-09, whereas during Black History Month, we honor the many achievements and influences made by African-Americans throughout the history of the United States, and hereby celebrate the contributions towards philosophy, medicine, sciences, arts, politics, human rights, athletics, and education, which have shaped the unique culture and identity of the United States. And whereas the theme of this year's Black History Month is African-Americans and the vote, recognizing the painful journey of African-Americans in their pursuit of civil rights, and of all Americans in their pursuit of the ideals of their constitution and founding documents. Therefore, the theme aims to address the ongoing struggle of African-Americans for the right to vote, and whereas in 1849, Wisconsinites voted. the right to vote, and whereas, in 1849, Wisconsinites voted on the issue of African-American suffrage, and the referendum received 5,265 votes in favor of suffrage and 4,075 against. Yet, the state board of the canvassers declared the referendum invalid. However, African-American men would not obtain the right to vote in Wisconsin until 1866, making it the first Midwestern state to grant African-American men full suffrage. And whereas, the 15th Amendment was ratified in 1870 and provided African-American men the right to vote across the United States. However, in the days and decades that followed the passage of the 15th Amendment, African-American men suffered unspeakable obstacles in the pursuit of their newly established right to vote. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the centennial of the 19th Amendment and the culmination of the women's suffrage movement, which was ratified in 1920 after decades of activism by black and white men and women, often side by side, providing all women the right to vote. And whereas, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 was passed amidst the civil rights movement of the 1960s to ensure the rights of African-Americans to exercise their right to vote. And whereas, through their struggles of suffrage, many outstanding African-Americans have advanced the civil and human rights of all people by and through those who fought on the front lines during the civil rights movement of the 1960s. And whereas, the City of Middleton recognizes the fight for civil rights and equity for African-Americans continues up to this present moment, and wishes to continue to grow a community that values the history and contributions of African-Americans in Wisconsin and the United States, and to build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. Do you do this part?
I can do it. So, now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council recognizes February 2020 as Black History Month in the City of Milton, and be it further resolved that the city encourages the celebration of this month by inviting all residents in the city to learn more about past and to better shape the future. Moved by the common council of the City of Milton on 4th day of February 2020, need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Emily and Katie, so all, any questions or in discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone false, the motion passes unanimously.
And I want to say a special thanks to the intern who...
Katie Sands. Thank you, Mike, for making it happen. All right, so, to item number five, 2020-10, authorizing the reappropriation of 2019 Capital Project Fund carryovers. Yes, well, Mark was getting ready for, to say something, but yes.
I'll let Mark...
Yes. Yes, Mark, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution reauthorizing the, authorizing the reappropriation of the Capital Project Fund carryovers. Secondary to that, that we defer any decision on the fund balance until the operating results are available for discussion.
So, Robert, you're seconding it.
I will second it with the caveat that there is a date in here of 2018 in the resolution itself, that should be a date of 2019.
No.
Let's fix it. Okay, with this caveat taken care of, any questions or other questions or comments? Most of you were here during the...
It's under, "Now therefore, be it resolved as follows," in that one sentence typo.
Oh, big one.
Yes, that's a big one. Thank you, Robert. It's at the last line, "Now therefore," so. Well, it happened, so, you know, not all changes get made. Any other changes or questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone false, the motion passes unanimously. Motion adjourned.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.